Call to order, the July tenth, El Segundo, City of El Segundo Planning Commission meeting. As always, we'll start with call to order and roll call.
Go ahead and take roll call. Commissioner Christian.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor.
Present.
Commissioner McCavity.
Present.
Vice Chair Inga.
Present.
And Sherma Guy.
Present.
We have quorum.
And as always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, all join. Okay, up next, we have the consent calendar. We actually have two items on the consent calendar, but I think we're going to pull one off, since we have a presentation and the applicant... Oh, I'm sorry. The public communications, I should open up public communications. Is there anyone here that is speaking on an item that is not agendized that would like to make comments? Okay, we will close public comment, seeing none. Then we move to the consent calendar. We'll pull off item number two and just approve item number one on consent, if I can get a motion.
I present the motion to approve item number one, which are the minutes from our meeting on June 12.
Second.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner McCavity.
Yes.
Vice Chair Inga.
Yes.
And Sherma Guy.
Aye.
Motion passes five oh.
So, item number two, that has been pulled off the consent calendar, administrative use permit to allow the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for onsite consumption at the new members-only private club and existing restaurants at Chargers One Way. And I believe we have a presentation?
Yes, if the commission wishes to have a brief staff presentation, we're ready for that.
Yep.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and turn it over to Maria Balde Negro.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Plan Commission. The applicant is requesting alcohol service for a private members-only club and an existing restaurant at the facility, is a training facility for football. The site looks like this from an aerial view. It's located in a specific plan, South El Segundo specific plan. The project is a request for alcohol service for a restaurant that requires an AUP per the south campus specific plan, zone. And the Chargers facility is 150,000 square feet. The proposed hours are from 11:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. There's going to be live entertainment. And the restaurant will have alcohol, the conference rooms will have alcohol, and three fields. The restaurant is located on the third floor of the building. This is the aerial view of the three fields. This is the floor plan showing the whole configuration of the third floor with 799 square feet for the restaurant. There's a terrace also on the third floor that will also include alcohol service. This is the main entry to the building. This is the view from the field, and you could see the terrace on the right on the third floor. Staff believes the required findings can be made for the approval of the alcohol service for both the private club and the restaurant and are described in the AUP approval letter. Alcohol service is compatible with the private club and the restaurant. Alcohol service will have conditions of approval to ensure that there's noise that will not affect the area and the hazards that may affect the public and neighboring properties will be mitigated. And the applicant will apply and secure a type 57 ABC license. Therefore, staff recommends that the Plan Commission receive and file the director's approval letter. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I have the applicant's representative here in the room. His name is Steve Rawlings.
Do we have any questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none, we'd like to open up public comment, and as always, we give the applicant the first right to speak.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Rawlings. I have been retained to assist the Chargers with licensing their new facility here. For the record, we do concur with the staff's recommendation and agree to all the conditions of approval as presented to you this evening. Might as well use a little bit of time here to do a little promo of it. This is going to be a pretty exciting venue. Obviously, I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to tour the entire facility, but it's quite impressive, state-of-the-art. This private club concept, it is for the third floor. I think that they're looking for a lot of corporate memberships, but they do have, you know, individual memberships. They also will use it kind of for some of their own internal functions and things, you know. Hey, if they're having a press day, they might want to, you know, have the press and serve them, you know, meals and have beverages available there. Sometimes they might have a tent out on the field there so that, you know, maybe people that are sponsors are taking out advertising at the venue have a special day and might have a little luncheon and offer some beverages there, too. So, anyway, they are looking to have that opened up this fall, you know, before the season really gets going here. So, they are... So, if anybody's interested in becoming a member, you can certainly make an inquiry to the team, and they are more than happy to tour you and potentially sell you a membership. I don't know any of the details about the membership, but it's going to be quite... It's quite a facility, and I think, obviously, a really, really unique experience here. So, anyway, with that, if anybody's got any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I'm out. I can start. So, Mari and I did a tour of the facility when you were giving tours to, like, city members. And there's a lobby, there's kind of this grand lobby where they're serving food and things like that. Is that part of where there will be alcohol service, or is that not part of the private club?
Possibly down in the lobby area, you know, we are... To have flexibility, we, you know, kind of... It's mostly going to be just in there and sometimes maybe in some of the executive conference rooms. But if they're having kind of a little bit of a special day, they might have something out there on the... in the lobby there, but not typically.
I didn't see the lobby as part of the areas where beer and wine will be served.
No, they did not request, but we did try to give them a blanket approval.
Okay. Okay.
With the three fields and the multiple executive conference rooms and the restaurant, yes.
But... So, it doesn't sound like it's included.
Yeah.
No, the lobby is not. It's primarily circulation.
Is that something that we could, you know, talk about? Because, you know, I think, not that they would have a lot of things there, but, you know, your experience was that they were serving, you know, some beverages there in the lobby area. It wouldn't be, obviously, for everyday use. That'd be something that we could incorporate in, you know, common areas like that. I mean, obviously, they're probably not having players in the locker room, considering they want to keep them very healthy.
Is there, I don't know, from the staff perspective, is there a reason why the application is limited? If...
The request was not made.
Okay, so they just didn't ask for it. Okay.
Well, we weren't specific, I don't think, about the areas. You know, we kind of listed off, you know, executive conference rooms, and then, you know, from time to time, there might be events out on the fields. We want to make it clear that from time to time, we might be out there. And I kind of forgot that, yeah, maybe in the lobby, they might have something. And so, more or less, an oversight more than anything else. But, you know, we wanted the flexibility to be able to have things throughout the facility. I mean, it is very closed to the public, anyway. The license is a private club license, so, you know, these would only be, obviously, invite-only type of events.
I mean, I'm imagining we would... We're probably trying to help you to not have a mismatch between when you go to the board to get your license and what we approved, if in fact you're considering something slightly broader, you might...
I appreciate bringing that up, because that was kind of a little bit of an oversight when I was kind of reading the staff report. I was like, oh, this kind of covers it. But, you know, now I'm realizing, okay, our ask is to be as flexible as we can kind of throughout the building and then just on the practice fields.
Yeah, I mean, unless we think that for some reason, the board would ask more questions because the lobby is more apt to be open than all those other parts of the facility. But I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Typically, from the ABC side, you know, it's a members-only, and obviously, they know that, hey, there's just not, you know, we can't just pull up and say, hey, let's go out there tonight. I mean, you can't even get in the facility inside the parking lot. So, you know, from ABC's perspective, they're not particularly concerned about the...
So, is there a change that you would like to make? Is there a quick change to this that we can do, or is this part of the ABC application process?
No, ABC just wants to know that we approved it, and I think the way, you know, it is pretty limiting. And I think what we did was, we just kind of took what the request was and included it and tailored it into a condition. We could amend that and just read it into the record.
Well, I mean, if the applicant wants to do so, yeah.
How it wants to be read, read. We're here to help.
Well, certainly, we would like as much flexibility and be able to kind of, anywhere within the facility, have it. I mean, obviously, some places, we're never going to have it, but...
Yeah, and quite frankly, I think from a staff standpoint, I don't really see a big issue, concern with it because it is a members-type-only facility anyways. It'd be different if it was, you know, open to the general public.
Sure.
Where they're kind of walking all over the place. But knowing that it's members-only, it's going to be, you know, limited to... And at the end of the day, if someone goes in the lobby area and with a drink, we're going to come down on them and say, oh, you're not fully compliant. So, we could structure it, and we'll have to read it into the record so that we memorialize it, and then we'll just amend and update the AUP letter to reflect that, the updated condition, number one.
Chair, if I may, the recommendations and findings that are necessary to approve the AUP were written based on what staff has explained. And so, what I would suggest is if you can quickly review those findings and as long as you're comfortable that those findings can still be made while incorporating the lobby area, because that's the baseline or the premise in which we're recommending or which we did approve the AUP at a director's level. And so, as long as there's comfort with those findings still covering the lobby, then as Eduardo mentioned, we can read into the record the amended areas to include the lobby area. And with that, I think that would cover what's being discussed.
Right, and the findings that Michael is talking about can be found on pages 13 through 15 of the packet.
The five of them?
I'm sorry?
There's only five of them, right?
Yes, that's correct. And in summary, it talks about compatibility, the particular use on the site in relation to other existing uses in the area. The second finding is that the proposed use is consistent and compatible with the purpose of the zone, and in this case, it's the specific plan. Third finding is that the proposed location and use and the conditions under which it would be operated will not be detrimental to the public health and safety. And number four is potential impacts that could be generated, such as noise, smoke, dust, fumes, vibration, odors, traffic, and hazards have been recognized and mitigated. And the fifth finding is that the ABC has issued or will issue a license to sell alcohol to the applicant.
As I'm reading and hearing you say it, I don't think that giving them more flexibility really changes any of these findings.
Right, and it could be where it just be is limited to the confines of the building, practice fields, and executive conference rooms. But I think the building already has... The executive conferences are already...
Everything's in the building, yeah.
I mean, if the commission feels that the findings can still be made, we can... We could suggest an edit to that so that it says alcohol service is limited to the areas contained within the building, comma, the practice fields, comma, and the practice fields. So, that way, you know, they're not taking it out to the parking lot and, you know...
I'm good with that.
Sounds good.
Hey, I appreciate you guys bringing that up, and I appreciate your support for that. It gives us a little more flexibility.
That way, when you invite us, we can come to the lobby and then...
I'm working on my end.
And if we want to be even that much more nuanced, I mean, we could say within the building and the associated terraces, like the balconies that are...
Yeah.
That overlook the practice fields. Or maybe something like, you know, certain public areas. That way, the lobbies could be considered public, the, you know, certain, I don't know.
I think same.
Something just... That falls within the public area of the building.
Yeah, I think public areas is probably problematic.
Too broad, okay. Because it's not really public anywhere. There's no public area in the entire facility, so, all right. So, okay, so alcohol service is limited to the confines of the building along with the terraces and balconies on the second floor and the practice fields.
And the third floor, we have a terrace on the third floor.
Oh, okay. On the second and third floors.
Yeah.
And with that.
All right. That pretty much, yeah, encompasses everything. They're just not the parking lots, essentially.
All right. Great.
So... Do we have any other... Thank you, Steve. Do we have any other speakers on this item in the audience, seeing none? So, what is next for the, I guess, procedurally? Do we have to read something else into the record before we take a motion, or...
The motion can include as the... Approve... A motion to approve with the amended language as stipulated by staff to condition number one. And then we can take roll call and memorialize it that way. And then we would just go ahead and make those updated changes to the letter and the conditions.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion? Motion to approve with the amendment.
I second.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner McCavity.
Aye.
Vice Chair Inga.
Aye.
And Sherma Guy.
Aye.
Motion passes five oh.
Thanks, everybody. Have a nice evening.
Okay, moving on to item number three, third one-year time extension to vesting tentative parcel map number 83129, located at 650 700 North PCH and 737 Carl Jacobson Way. Do we have a presentation for this item?
Yes, we do. We have a brief presentation.
Yes, we do. We have a brief presentation. I'll go ahead and turn that over to Ma- to Maria as well.
Uh the application is for. Let me turn that on. The application is for the a third one-year extension of a vesting map and associated development. And the property addresses involved are six fifty to seven hundred North Pacific Coast Highway and seven thirty-seven Carl Jacobson Way. This is the site plan showing the aerial view of the three addresses. Um the parcels were merged to facilitate the development of the site. And the project was approved in twenty twenty-one. A first one-year extension of the map was approved in twenty twenty-three. And the second one-year extension was approved in twenty twenty-four. No changes are proposed to the proposed project. The proposed development included the remodel of two office buildings, office building A and B, and the construction of net increase of seventy thousand square feet of office with a parking structure containing one thousand one hundred eighty-five spaces. The map was due to expire on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. A timely request for the extension was submitted. No changes are proposed to the map or the project. The new expiration date will be May eighteenth, twenty twenty-six. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Um the findings can be made and uh we have a uh staff recommends the adoption of resolution number twenty-nine sixty-six.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
Maybe because I'm new, can we walk through like, what are we doing here? So is there a time limit that they have for the development that, like, why are we extending? So the 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 entitlements um ride on the coattails, if you will, of the subdivision. Now, in this case, it's not a subdivision in terms of actually dividing up parcels. The the reason is that they're assembling. And so when you assemble more than four year um lots, you have to go through a tentative part uh track map or a track map uh subdivision process. And so that per state law, so the Division Map Act uh affords them a two-year time extension, which is consistent with with also our entitlements. Um the Subdivision Map Act, which again, our our code is consistent with, affords a developer and applicant to request uh annual extensions. Um and so as those extensions are granted, so are the entitlements associated. They also get automatically extended as well. How long do they get? How many do we do? So they get do a total of five extensions. And so we're on the third one. So we're on the third, okay.
And after after that, what happens if they don't?
Then the uh the uh the approvals expire and they'd have to refile a new application and go through the entitlement process again. Correct.
A whole site plan review, environmental, everything.
And so this is for a one-year, another one-year extension, okay? Alright, okay, those are my questions.
Great, with that, we'll we'll open to public comment. And as always, we'll give the applicant or the applicant's representative the first chance to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Amravir Bar. Uh I'm here on behalf of the property ownership and applicant for uh the six fifty PCH project, as we call it. Um uh just to add to staff's presentation, um yes, it's a one-year extension per the Subdivision Map Act. We'd love to have a longer extension if possible, um but you know, we're constrained by state law there. Um and I think just to touch on two things, uh one is why are we requesting this extension? Um I think it's just uh we, I think we wish that we could have started construction already. But just the state of the market since we got entitled in twenty twenty-one um has been quite difficult. Construction costs are high, interest rates are high, office is a difficult product right now, and it's, I think it's still in flux. And we're trying to figure out the best route forward with that. Um that's why we're requesting the extension, besides the actual statutory requirements. And then part two uh is maintenance of the building. We understand from staff. We've been talking to staff about uh the condition of the building. Um I've been working with ownership and applicant team to uh clean up some of the issues on the site, including the south-facing facade, could use a repaint, um there's some broken windows, uh and there's some landscaping issues. Uh so we've been pushing very hard to get that done. I was hoping to have it done before we were here today. Um that has not happened yet, um but we are working on it and hoping to have it done soon. Um that's that's all I would like to add today, if you have a question for any questions.
Is it through the entitlement process? Has it gone through plan check yet? Or is it just in the entitlement process? I'm a little curious just where it's at in the state of like market change around. It's ready to go, would be ready to go, you know, in a month from now? Or you start to go through the whole plan check process?
We've we've only gone through the entitlement process. There's no construction drawings or or plan check right now.
So, alright, so this would put you guys up to what, twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven?
One year.
Oh, just one year. But I mean, well, I'm being, I'm looking ahead, right? So does the ownership group have projections or any macroeconomic outlook that makes us think that they believe that they would go forward before this expires?
I I don't have any of those details with me today. Um you know, I think everyone wants to see something built here. But I don't I don't have any projections or things I can point to.
Yeah, I mean, I literally had a resident ask me like, what's up with that building and why it looks crazy? But um we think you'll just be back here next year, probably asking for another extension. Because you don't have any reason to think that this is the last time.
I I can't give you a great answer there.
Okay. Yeah.
What what construct say? When when is the extension start? Like, when the construction starts? Is it plan check or when is, I'm curious on that?
So, yeah, so they, so before it expires, at this point, they would have to um have submitted to plan check.
Just a submission of plan check?
Correct.
Okay.
And then assuming that, let's take the scenario that uh, you know, come May fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, before it expires, they submit in a plan check. They theoretically don't have to request an extension because now the approvals, they've effectuated part of their approvals by submitting to plan check. And so if they would allow, if they end up allowing their plan check to expire, then at that point, the entire project would expire as well approvals. So helping me out, when we get to plan check, is that an expensive process? Like, that next step, is that expensive? Well, there are plan check fees associated with it and I, you know, we can't, I can't sit here and tell you how much what could be expensive to one developer, maybe very expensive to another. Uh but there are certain variables that go into determining how what that fee is. But also you need to acknowledge too that there is also other costs associated with preparing those plans as well. Yeah. Um that we don't see, uh that is obviously bur- you know, the uh burden falls on on the applicant. So, yeah, so that's kind of a broad question. I really can't say, is it yes expensive or no, it's not? Well, I mean, I guess, is it de minimis? So it sounds like it's not de minimis. Like, it's not a thousand dollars, right, to do, to submit for a plan check? So it would require additional investment on their part to get to that step. So they wouldn't. I guess I'm I'm, if it's not clear, my concern is that this drags on forever um without anybody doing anything. And so something would have to happen where somebody's got to make a move because they're gonna have to spend some money at some point. Maybe it's twenty-seven when this thing finally, we run out of extensions. They would have to do something that would move the project forward, that would indicate there's still skin in the game besides having to start over. Okay, I'm happy.
I I was telling Eduardo that we approved this uh project at my first planning commission meeting. I remember that distinctly. And one of my comments was that um we had to, be- because the the this strip of PCH is kind of the only thing some people see of El Segundo, and they have this big giant monolithic thing that's not that great-looking. And you know, sometimes the traffic, so they're staring at this ugly building, that it's important for us to revitalize that building as quickly as possible. But unfortunately, we live in times of economic uncertainty, uh which is unfortunate. Um but I think that, you know, I think you guys are still with it. You're just waiting for things to pan out, which I think that we support and understand, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the dice?
Were you here last year and I just forgot?
Yes.
You looked familiar, but I was.
Yes, I was I was here last year and the year before that.
And did I ask the same question? Did I ask this? I feel like, I feel like, I hope I'm being consistent, so.
Very consistent in the question.
Yeah, like I asked the same question. It's gonna keep going on. Alright.
The questions and answers were consistent.
Perfect, thank you. It's also benefits the new viewing audience. Yeah, oh, yes, welcome. Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Um and would that all close pub- public comment on this item? And uh any thoughts or anyone willing to make a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
I second.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner McCavity.
Aye.
Vice Chair Inga.
Yes.
And Sherma Guy.
Aye.
Motion passes five oh.
Item number four, conditional use permit to allow new fitness studio, urban golf performance at one three nine Maryland Street. Um yeah, at one three nine Maryland Street. Any other presentation from Jasmine?
Yes, we do. While she preps that, um I will, just kind of introduce it. Yes, this is a uh actually uh a CUP that's now become, comes before us. Uh the 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 trigger was that it is a gym slash fitness studio. And if the co- commission may recall, or previous commission actually, when we last amended the uh the the uh the specific plan for Smoky Hollow, uh we did uh place that use as an allowable use, but only for small fitness studios. So kind of like the, you know, more of the mom and pop type. And so we put it at threshold to avoid having like the twenty-four hour fitness or, you know, Planet Hollywood type of large fitness studios. And not that to prevent them, but at least having an additional layer of review um that they have to go through a CUP process. So fast forward to today, um this facility is considered a fitness studio, but it is over twenty-five hundred square feet, requiring a CUP, and that's what's before us today. And I'll go ahead and I'll turn that over to Jasmine.
And it's the first one. Uh good evening. I'll be presenting a staff report on the item presented in front of you for urban golf performance. The project site is within the Smoky Hollow East Zone, and it's surrounded by uses including industrial office, multifamily residential. The project site is eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety square feet, and it is developed with a nine thousand five hundred and ninety-five square feet, single-story industrial building. Um it does have a surface parking level of seventeen parking spaces total, and they do have an off-site location allocated to seven parking spaces. Pursuant to Smoky Hollow's specific plan, section two point two point three, planning commission approval of a conditional use permit is required for a fitness studio that's larger than two thousand five hundred square feet. It's the highlighted one. The proposed new fitness studio will primarily offer personal training services similar to physical therapy and warm-up exercises tailored to golf. The facility will be open to the public. Reservations will be required to utilize the services and amenities, and memberships will not be offered. So it's gonna be a controlled setting. Uh pursuant to El Segundo Municipal Code, section fifteen dash twenty-four dash six A, the planning commission must make all three finding, all three findings listed above in reference to the property and project under consideration. Staff finds that all three findings can be affirmatively made as the fitness studio use is consistent with the Smoky Hollow's specific plan goals, and it will not be detrimental to the public welfare. There are no adverse impacts expected on the nearby properties. The proposed fitness studio encourages business growth and provides a smooth transition between dense uses and lower-density uses. It will also comply with the provisions of El Segundo Municipal Code, chapter twenty-four. As the project followed proper notice and hearing procedures, it includes appropriate conditions of approval to ensure compliance and meets El Segundo development standards. I do want to highlight that they are utilizing an existing industrial building. Uh they will be making minor modifications to the exterior of the site, uh which will include doors, windows, kind of like a new facade setting. The project is categorical categorically exempt under SEQA Guidelines, section one five three oh three, class three, as there is no hazardous substances. The project is under ten thousand square feet, and it is a conversion of a small structure in an urbanized area. The project supports city strategic plan as it also aligns with the city's vision of a vibrant, sustainable, and economically resilient Smoky Hollow district that's gonna serve both businesses and residents. Staff has reviewed the proposed use and is recommending that the planning commission adopt resolution number two nine six seven for E eight one three nine five and CUP twenty-five oh one. The project is consistent with the general plan, Smoky Hollow's specific plan in SEQA. The applicant is also present if you have any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing then, we will open public comment, and we will have the applicant, if they're willing to make the first public comments.
Hey, guys, how are you? Uh Brian Gallagher, uh GM of uh UGP. Um I don't know what to say at all, so if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. But um we've been a business for twelve or thirteen years now, not anywhere close to the size of, as you mentioned, uh twenty-four hour fitness, um LA Fitness, those things. Uh most of our facilities are around five to six thousand square feet. Um we, as she touched on, control the trip count very well by having private one-on-one sessions with our our clientele. Um and yeah, I mean, this area has always been something that we've been very focused on. I've spent years looking for um the opportunity in this area. We have a lot of clients that travel up to see us at our other locations in the LA area. Um we have two there, and this will just help us service the vast majority of the South Bay area.
Great, any questions?
Three other locations at currently in LA?
Uh so there's one on Sepulveda between Peak and Olympic, um right off the four oh five. And then there's another one um in uh it's at, it's it's interesting, it's LA. But it's like, our one wall is the other side of it is Santa Monica, so it's right on the corner of uh Sentinel and Wilshire.
Does this be your largest one in the LA area then?
Yes, yeah.
What what hours do you anticipate to uh have the stadium open?
I'm sorry?
What hours?
Hours, uh so yeah, Monday through, Monday through uh Thursday, uh six AM to seven. And then uh just one day on the weekend uh for about a half day.
Do the other locations have this physical therapy element included?
Yes.
Does that require like special permitting or anything like that, just to?
Uh our our PTs are all licensed to to do the work, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just uh commenting. It seems like it's like a mini, very mini Topgolf meets that Live Love Life that's over there by Whole Foods now, or like, because there's.
Yeah.
Tail, I don't know.
I kind of, I kind of see what you're saying, yeah. It's um, it's a, we like to think of it as a three hundred sixty-degree approach of just golf performance training. So we have um a couple of staff members that travel around the world with some of the top players um that offer those sorts of like physio um help to them as well. Um a very good friend of mine started this company a long time ago, and I looked him in the face and told him he was crazy for doing it because I played professional golf too with him, and I didn't think that like his idea was really something that would take off. And here I am eating those words for the past ten plus years, so it's been one hell of a ride and um.
So it's highly, highly specialized?
Very much so, yeah.
Okay.
It seems more of like a like a performance and training place versus like a social club.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, not, no, no entertainment whatsoever, yeah. So the that like Topgolf or you see a lot of other um. spaces that are trying, or other companies are trying to get into the indoor golf space and that's where they just kind of, it's, it's very intensive what we do, right? Like it's very much focused on how well our staff and treats our clients and that's, we just absolutely pride ourselves in our customer service. Whereas like those venues are more like, hey, come on in, it's one kind of big party and play some golf at the same time as you're having some drinks and food.
So you won't be back asking for, and beer and wine?
No, sir.
And we do have conditions in the approval letter as well that limit and let them know that they can't do that unless they go through the proper procedure. But based on the layout and the floor plan review, there's really no space for that because everything is being utilized for golf specific services only.
People find a way when they want, they want to get a beer and they'll find a way.
What was the parking, onsite parking again?
17 parking spaces onsite and across the street in that new parking structure, they have seven parking spaces allocated, which is more than enough for the required parking space, I think.
This is an unexpected flow into the streets of people parking streets.
Correct. Specifically because it's tailored to appointment base only. So it's not like you choose, you could walk into, correct me if I'm wrong, to walk the venue, but you can get services as a walk-in. You have to make appointments since it's one-on-one.
That's correct.
So like fully, like it's bustling and buzzing. Like what are you thinking the?
The maximum amount of people?
Yeah.
You're not going to see more than six to maybe seven or eight clients at a time and then you have the same amount of staff.
Plus the staff, so 15, 20 people.
Right.
Might be the most people.
Correct.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. I don't know how this works though.
It's like your third location. You have like a free recorded presentation.
Yeah, I, I believe from the conversations we've had in the other locations, they didn't have to go through a CUP process. But specifically because this location requires planning commission approval for a CUP, it's, it's the first time.
Got it.
We're special.
With that, I'll close public comment. Any other comments from commissioners? Then would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner McCavity.
Aye.
Vice Chair Inga.
Aye.
And Chair Magai.
Aye.
Motion passes five oh.
Welcome to El Segundo. Item number five, design review for new mixed-use development in the downtown specific plan area and an adjustment in parking demand study for automated robotic vehicle lift parking mechanisms to satisfy the minimum required spaces at 201, 209 Richmond Street. And we have a presentation on this item?
Yes, we do. Project manager Maria Baldinegro has worked on this and so she'll deliver a brief presentation as well of the item.
The applicant Mark Teller, representative of Smokey Hollow's industry, says file an application requesting approval of a mixed-use development project in downtown at 201, 209 Richmond Street.
The site is 17,500 square feet. You could see here in the vicinity map, it's located on the northwest corner of Richmond Street and Franklin Avenue. It has two existing brick buildings. One is the old jailhouse. It's a historic resource of the downtown. The other building is a two-story brick building at 207. The map shows it at 209, but it is already had the address changed to 207. The 203 Richmond Street jailhouse is 891 square feet and the two-story brick building is 3,847 square feet. So the project description overall is a three-story development. The combined total area is 19,312 square feet. It does include the existing and the proposed additions. On the first floor, we have mostly retail. It's 7,251 square feet. On the second floor is 12,061 square feet. And the project also includes six residential units. And the breakdown is a two, one bedroom, two bedroom and, and a three bedroom. And you could see the multiple types of units to combine and end up with six. The project does preserve and incorporate the two existing buildings and they're listed and described there. 50 parking spaces are proposed. 42 are provided in an automated robotic parking mechanism and eight surface parking spaces. And the entitlements requested are the downtown design review for the new development because the added, the added square footage is 14,574 square feet. So that triggers the requirement of planning commission approval required. The parking adjustment is being requested for the tandem parking configuration that does not comply with our normal configuration, which is two spaces in depth or two stacked vehicles. The parking demand study is required to demonstrate that sufficient parking spaces will be provided for the development and for the mix of land uses and to make sure that the development at the, would not be, affect any of the neighboring properties by not having sufficient parking. So this is the site plan and what I want to point out is that access to the parking is primarily through the alley. The mechanism is three cars in depth and three cars stacked. I'm, I provided a section through the building so that you could see on the lower right corner what it looks like when you cut through the building. And the surface parking is very limited. It's only eight parking spaces. You have your ADA parking right behind the retail. A minimum of 36 spaces are required and they are providing 42 in the mechanism and eight surface. So they definitely exceed the minimum parking. The city did require the peer review of the parking demand study to ensure that the proposed automated robotic vehicle lift mechanism will provide sufficient parking spaces for work, to work operationally for the mix of uses and to ensure that the peak hours would be not affected by not having sufficient parking and also traffic, to review the traffic of how the mechanism works and how quickly it, it works and whether you would block access to the alley or going into the driveway. So the downtown specific plan, we have a new downtown specific plan that was adopted to ensure that the future form of the new development in the downtown adheres to customized context-sensitive development standards in the downtown specific plan. And the Richmond Street District is intended to celebrate the traditional old town character. And the proposed development is in accordance with the chapter, with chapter two of the downtown specific plan and table 2.1 per the parking table that's in 210. And so this is a color rendering showing the, the project looking northwest from the intersection of Richmond Street and Franklin Avenue. And what's important to point out is that the proposed materials incorporate smooth plaster, concrete, concrete block, powder coated black aluminum, glossy steel I-beams, brick and white oak wood. And the proposed combination of materials are designed to integrate the two existing brick buildings and it results in an eclectic mix that actually expresses what the area is like. The architecture is used to fit well within the urban context and the large storefront windows are provided on the ground floor for pedestrians to enjoy shopping. There's sloped, sloped roof lines to architecturally complement the old brick buildings in the area and also bring a modern geometric feel. The roof decks are proposed above the first and second floor facing Richmond Street and you could see they're used as balconies and also roof gardens for the residential component that's on the third floor. And this is the view looking from Richmond Street. So the DSP has a chapter that is the administration chapter and has required findings that have to be made before the project can be approved by the planning commission. And the two findings are that the, the project design is consistent with the goals, policies and objectives of the general plan and the downtown specific plan. And that includes the land uses, development standards for setbacks, parking and the goals of the specific plan to improve the area, to invite investment. The general plan to add residential, we're adding six residential units in the downtown. And the second finding is that the project design is substant, substantially complies with the development standards and guidelines in chapter two of the downtown specific plan. And that has to do with the large storefront windows that have to be 14 feet in height to provide full hot, glass glazing and invite pedestrian activity so that people come and walk and use the area to meet and, and shop. So the proposed mixed-use project design substantially complies with the development standards and the design criteria of the downtown specific plan. And the project does preserve two brick buildings, one being a historic resource, the jailhouse. And the new materials that are being introduced are modern materials, but still work well with the context and the historic building. The overall aesthetic improves Richmond Street District and also is context-sensitive to the area. And therefore staff believes that the findings can be made to approve the design and development of the site as proposed. We also have the entitlement for the required findings that need to be made regarding the parking adjustment because the configuration is not two cars in depth or two cars stacked. So the adjustment has to meet the finding that the proposed adjustment would not be detrimental to the neighborhood or district which the project is located and that the proposed adjustment is necessary in order that the applicant may not be deprived and reasonably in the use of or enjoyment of the project. And that the proposed adjustment is consistent with the legislative intent of this title. And so the city did require that the parking demand study be reviewed. Peer review was performed by Kimling Horn. We hired them to do the review. And they concluded that the proposed parking mechanism will provide sufficient parking spaces to work operationally and for the mix of land uses during peak hours without negatively affecting street traffic or neighboring properties in the downtown. And the type of mechanism that's being used is becoming more popular because it's, requires less space and less land that would have to be invested to develop a, a large parking structure. So by allowing this relief, it does meet and is consistent with the legislative intent of an adjustment because allowing them to provide the required parking and the mechanism rather than having them have to provide it on surface land or in a parking structure would not only be costly, but make it harder to develop the, the project. And the main issue is also that they are protecting two buildings that are not adjacent to each other, that are spaced and so you have patches. They have foundations that are old and if you try to go underground, you would be affecting and possibly destroying the structural ability for the building to remain standing when you start going underground and try to do a whole underground parking level. We do have conditional approval that have been included and that has to do with the residential units being required to use the mechanism and the office area on the second floor to also try to use most of the mechanism. And this is intended to relieve and make sure that the surface parking available behind the retail is, is there for the bigger, larger turnover that's normally associated with retail. So the conditional approval are included to ensure the mechanism is installed and maintained in a safe manner. And that staff finds that the proposed project is categorically exempt from CEQA as a class 32 infill development project. And staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number 2968 approving environmental assessment 1375, the downtown design review application, the parking adjustment and the parking demand study. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. You may have the applicant and his architect is here to answer any questions you may have from them.
So I have a question for you. So we, we approved this project before we did the design review process. And the, the only reason we're looking at it again now is because of the parking adjustment, correct? And the, the parking study?
So what happened is that the development was approved and the entitlement expired. And it only had one year. So the, the approval was granted July 8th, 2021 and it expired in 2022. In the meantime, we also adopted a brand new downtown specific plan. So now any new application that comes in, we have to review it based on the new downtown criteria. And it's a whole design package. And that's why the applicant is here, trying to get whole new entitlement approval again.
Okay. And I'm bringing this up because I don't think that the project has materially changed except for the parking adjustment, right? It still has the same theme, same, it still fits in with the area, still, you know, pretty much the same. Is that, am I correct in saying that? So I, I guess I, or is that we spent less time on the actual design review process as we've already went through that and found that it's compliant and can focus on the parking adjustment and the parking study.
The biggest difference was that the old downtown allowed the, a larger adjustment automatically because of the protection of the historic resource. And that standard or that avenue has been removed. The downtown, the new downtown specific plan that was adopted does encourage protection of, of the brick buildings and the historic resource, but it doesn't give relief automatically where you could request it. So the applicant has to request an adjustment. And the previous application did have more compact. It, it had an adjustment as well and he had also parking lifts that exceeded the, the maximum that you could have, but he could get it because the downtown specific plan clearly stated that you could request it by protecting the historic resource.
Well, one more question. Did you say that the entrance of the parking is going to be through the alley of Franklin?
Yes.
Is there a rendering of that part of the project?
So this site plan shows where the Franklin is and where Richmond Street is and alley. And you could see the mechanism. Richmond Street is and alley and you could see the mechanism, uh, is off the alley.
And i- i- to get a rendering, although it's not provided in, in the PowerPoint, um, I believe. You could see a rendering, uh, in the packet, it's on page one fifty-eight of one ninety-five.
Of how it looks like along the alley, yeah.
Got it, okay. I, I, my phone is not nearly as fast, I, I scrolled too quickly. And it is now rendering on my screen, let's see here. I, I guess while our technology catches up, um. Oh yeah, I've done too much.
This is the other.
Okay, curious. I guess my, I guess if everybody else is fine with the parking thing, I'm a little skeptical, but I'm fine. My questions are more broad about, so the, does the downtown specific plan? Is there a separate? Set of standards for the Richmond Street part or is that just part of the downtown specific plan, there is a separate?
Richmond Street part. Yes, uh, yeah, you have, you have the global standards that apply to all properties and then there are specific standards within those that fall within. Um, the different sub areas, if you will.
Right, and then, so when I, so it's, when we talk about preserving. You use a very interesting term, but like, uh, uh, historic resource? Like what do we, this, when I look at that, that rendering that of the proposed development? It's almost. I, I struggle to see how that preserves the old-timey. Look and feel of Richmond Street, so I, I mean, I'm not even against, I'm not against it as a. Design, I'm just curious, like we, we think that that preserves. An old-timey look and feel of Richmond Street, like it fits in with the rest of it?
Well.
And that that building that we're trying to hold on to is being held on to with this development?
Yeah, and, and I, I think, I think it was part, part of it is, is kind of conflating the two, right? Where you have the, 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 um, uh, holding on to and preserving the building and the facade that currently exists and then building around it. Um, you know, I think there, there is obviously an intent and, and, and it's successful, at least in here. To preserve that jailhouse, at, at least the, the, um, the, the, the building and, and the facade, uh, that's there. Uh, what's built around it, uh, you know, obviously it's gonna be new, I mean, we, we all kind of acknowledge that. Um, but I think that the, what the, what the, what the architect has done is at least. Brings in some brick, some, uh, some smooth type of, uh, exterior finishes that are. May not be a, a match with the jailhouse. But it at least furthers and complements that instead of like bringing in. Totally brand-new materials that are not out there currently, um, and so, and I think looking at it in its entirety. You know, I think bringing in some of these, these elements and looking at the, the, the exterior finishes that you do see on other. Uh, buildings within the immediate neighborhood, um, or in the immediate area, you know, they, they are. Tying in and you, they are bringing in compatible materials and incorporating that into the design. There obviously have some new, new elements, you know, some of the steel, but you know, I think that comes without, you know. Uh, that comes with as a price of, of progress and, and modernization of with today's, um, designs. But at least, you know, I think from a staff perspective, looking at this, the, we've believed that they are bringing in, in, in. New materials, but they're also enhancing the existing character by, by, um, incorporating. A lot of the finishes that are already found in that area.
So Mark, while you, while you're absorbing that, um, so that, that's kind of why I started with that first question. I wanted to know if the design reprocess was actually done and then we were just focusing on the, the adjustment. And but now, because we, I, I remember just saying that when we did this the first time, we had a much more robust presentation. So we had, we, you know, collectively looked at all the different renderings from all the different angles, I think that it's not the same presentation that, that. I had when we first had this and the other, the previous four commissioners. So I, but this, this, since this is a brand-new application completely, I think that this planning commission with a new member should have kind of that more robust. Presentation that I had the first time to go over the design, I think that Mark's questions were exactly the same things that we were asking about, um, when we approved it the first time. But as a new application, I think that, I mean, if you guys would like to see a more robust presentation, make a decision if it does fit in, you know. And you have the full designer view, I think that we should have more, and I, I hate to do this to you, but if we have more kind of. Angles in the presentation instead of, you know, quickly looking at it here, I think that that, that would be helpful for the, the four newer commissioners.
Was this design already approved by the previous?
Yes.
Or I mean, so, no, no, this building hasn't changed at all than the new?
This, this design is a, is a, for all intents and purposes, this is a brand-new project.
Oh yeah.
The previous, the previous approvals have expired, um, there's, you know, so we have considered this as a brand-new project. And we're assess, we assessed it in accordance with the guideline, or the, the review criteria in the current downtown specific plan.
But it looked like this the last time we looked, like all of this is the same except for the parking mechanism piece?
No, there are, there are some differences, um.
The, the style is essentially the same.
But yeah, it, it's, it incorporates the, like, the, a lot of the glazing, the glass, uh, um, and the, uh, uh, some of the, uh, the, the, the. Steel beams. Uh, now with the current downtown specific plan and those guidelines, you know, they, we have a little more, um, uh, review criteria. That wa- that was not part of the previous downtown specific plan design guidelines.
Okay.
For example, one of the design guidelines requires that you have an interior ceiling height of fourteen feet. That wasn't part of the, 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 um, uh, a requirement back in the previous downtown specific plan. So, um, you know, in, but in terms of, of doing a full, uh, you know, assessment, I mean, that is provided within the context of staff report. We, you know, we do have the table that lists the development requirements, the design requirements and guidelines. And we have a narrative that, uh, that goes over how the design incorporates and, 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 uh, effectuates those, uh, design principles and guidelines.
I get, I mean, I, I guess if you were to take. Trying to give respect to the previous iterations of this commission. If the previous commission looked at this project before. And we, we did a revision to the downtown specific plan that this also finds a way to fit within. I guess that's fine with me, I don't know if, I don't want to be the reason why we have to like start from scratch with a review. If the previous commission who were long-tenured, very experienced, looked at this and said. This is in keeping with everything we envisioned for maintaining the Richmond Street look and feel. Okay, I don't object to the design itself. I personally don't know how it fits within some sort of a vision of preserving. The look and feel of Richmond Street, but if everyone else, you know, agreed with that at the time, I'm like, alright, but I, I, I. Yeah, so if the old commission looked at this and thought it was fine and they've raised the ceiling heights and all that to fit within the new. Um, downtown specific plan guidelines, I guess that's okay, it's just.
Cher, if I may, um, if, if the commission is finished with questions of staff, it would be appropriate to. Entertain public comment and then have deliberation just to, to sort of get the full breadth of. Of presentation and, and then, uh, and then we can also have further discussion. On potential next steps as well, based on the additional information that you might get from any questions or, or applicant presentation.
Okay, so with that, then I'll open public comment and, uh, give the first speaker.
Good evening, my name is Mark Tellez, I represent Smoke Valley Industries, this is our project, been working on this since twenty nineteen. Um, since it was approved in twenty-one, the biggest change was we, Dave and I naively thought we could negotiate a deal with the cell phone tower. And they would be pleased to entertain a new lease to go on top of our new elevator tower. It turns out they were not interested in negotiating, in fact, they gave us a number of nine hundred thousand dollars to move their tower. That's currently in place with six years left on the lease to the top of the elevator tower, nine hundred thousand would kill this project, we, we couldn't afford to do that. So when, that was after the project was approved with planning commission and David and I were already into construction documents. And then at that point, we're like, hey, we can't proceed with the current design, we went to staff to try to figure out a solution. To maybe T-Mobile can move their tower onto a tower that the city owns or some other place, we hit a dead end. T-Mobile has no interest in moving the tower from where they were, so about, uh, twenty months ago, we made the decision. We just need to build our building around the cell phone tower if we want to get this project going, so that was the biggest change. So in, in parallel with our dead end with T-Mobile, a new downtown specific plan came. So we originally thought, okay, we can scramble and ask for an extension on the original adjustment from twenty twenty-one. Or wait for the new dow- downtown specific plan with different variables, some pros, some cons. Redevelop the building, but like, um, Kevin correctly said, the look and feel of the building is exactly the same. There are, I think the major changes are parking, we no longer have lifts, we have this new adjustment. Which allow all vehicles to get out at any given time, it's kind of like a giant vending machine, you hit I'm in eighty-seven, your, your car comes to the front, you can pull out. So it's not really tandem in the conventional sense where you need your buddy to pull their vehicle out in order for you to get out. Which was the adjustment that we asked for last time. Um, as far as the location, I, I'm a fan of the history, David and I, we love working on the project because we get a. Try to take advantage of a building from nineteen thirteen, the prison and the schoolhouse from nineteen seventeen, which is that building in the middle right there. As an architect and as a contractor, that's a world pain in the butt, but we're going out of our way to keep those old buildings and try our best to, um. Oh look, wow, thank you, there, there, there they are, it's kind of cool because that, that building there is no longer there. Um, that was City Hall. And if you look bottom, in the bottom picture, the back left corner, that's the prison that's still there in front of that nineteen twenties looking, um, vehicle. There you go.
Right there.
Yeah, so I, I learned more history, the, there was a bad earthquake in the nineteen seventies and they had to condemn that old City Hall building. And they tore the building out, I think in seventy-four, and it's been an asphalt parking lot ever since. Um, another big change with the, I think it's important because I, uh, housing, it's good for us as project applicants and also we think for the city. The original downtown specific plan was one apartment per twenty-five hundred square foot lot. We were developing at the time four different parcels, twenty-five hundred, so the previous iteration had four apartments. The new design has six apartments, the new downtown specific plan does not have a density limit, it's basically whatever you can fit based on building code. I think that, the, the biggest issue I wanted for everyone to realize was the cell phone tower was, was probably the largest reason why we're here right now. But I'll let David, the great architect, describe the, the design a little bit.
Good evening.
Oh, is that what, that's the cell phone?
Yeah.
Nice.
Uh, good evening commissioners, my name is David Ballion, Ballion Architects. Uh, wanted to add a little bit, a lot more color, so, uh, the project is a true mixed-use, it has commercial, office, um, and residential. And it's an infill project in a great part of town and, um, I wanted to address a few things that were discussed, um, so when you, when you read the downtown specific plan. The word eclectic comes up a lot and it's not that, um, downtown is a particular style, but it's eclectic, which means that there's a lot of different materials, a lot of different. If you can stay right there, so, um, that building that surrounds the existing brick building is actually one building. But the levels are not the same and the look of the two, though they share some glass, they're really different in the materiality. So even though it's one building, it actually looks like two separate projects, um, that was part of the goal to, to maintain the eclectic nature of the streetscape. So that one building is not at all ju- like the one next to it, which is, which brings that eclectic, um, kind of feel to it. Um, um, as Eduardo did a great job in describing all the materiality, uh, the materials are all very similar and. Akin to all the other developments along the street, but they're used in a contemporary manner. You wouldn't want to repeat or duplicate, you know, a style from the era, you want to, you know, use materials and, and methods perhaps, but do it in a. Style that's more, um, contemporary to today's kind of design aesthetic, um, but maintain that eclectic kind of feel. Um, if you can keep scrolling, um, the views, um, I mean, all four corners, um, oh, one thing I wanted to mention. The jailhouse in particular, we're maintaining a hundred percent of it as in all four sides, we're not, we are truly preserving it. Um, and it is truly a feature, you can't really see that from the other view, you have to kind of go down the street a little bit, but this is the, um, alley view. But we really are completely preserving it, stepping back the development to allow it to be a focal point. This is the alley view, um, the garage entrance is, you know, that sort of opening between the two materials, you can again see a lot of eclectic materials there. And the parking entrance is completely hidden from view, only accessible through the alley. Um, so it really is, um, a true puzzle piece, um, and yeah, you can see the great lengths we've gone to, to keep it. Eclectic and interesting and, um, with, with a lot of variety and. We didn't only sort of design the eclectic nature of the building on the facades only, but from top to bottom, as you can see, this is what the apartments would look like. So the apartments are specifically designed, kind of like the American dream where you lift up the, um, the residences above the retail. But also give everybody a yard, like a front yard, that's really unique, um, so it's almost like you take the, um, you know. Let's call it the tract home, um, you know, vision you get from the post-war and you bring it up onto a, an upper level. Um, so that folks have a yard for kids to play in. Um, yeah, so, um, I think I touched on materials, um, the eclectic nature of the development overall, um, we really did pay attention to every facade. Um, and, um, it was a really big challenge, you could see the cut in the building because of the tower and how difficult the structure was to accomplish this. Um, these existing buildings have very delicate foundations, which we've learned the hard way how, um, we need to preserve them.
A lot of sand, not much else.
Yeah, um, so we really do think that, um, the development does preserve the eclectic nature, um, of the street. Um, it's, uh, it's a corner lot, so it has presence, um, but the building really is different, um, as you go up and down the street. Um, yeah, even, like I said, even here, you can see one is sort of board form concrete, the other one is more glass and, um, the, the building in the center is existing and it actually does have some steel. So we are borrowing literally left and right from us, uh, but maintaining sort of a contemporary aesthetic that works with, um, today's, uh, aesthetic standards. Um, are there any questions I could help, um, sorry, one more thing to say, um, the parking adjustment. I don't want to be unfair, but, um, the zoning code as it stands today does not allow automatic parking. And, uh, automated parking is, is huge in the east coast with multi-level tiered parking. If you're familiar with, you know, Boston and Chicago and New York in particular, that kind of, um, parking systems are slowly making its way. Um, to the west coast and with, you know, land being so difficult and expensive and et cetera. You know, we feel strongly that we should embrace, uh, technologies like this. Why should cars take up so much land with aisles and aisles and aisles, you only use an aisle to move in and out of the parking garage, right? So to use a creative solution that preserves, stays away from those existing foundations, preserves the ability to do a project like this, provide housing, provide retail. Um, and really what we're, the problem with the, um, the request is simply that. It looks like tandem, but it's not tandem because any car can come out at any given time. So it's just not codified in the zoning code, that's really the request, you know, please allow automatic parking systems and it really doesn't violate.
Yeah, I, I'm so sorry, I have to run, my son is in a play at the high school that starts at seven, um. And that was my big questions were around the automate, like I'm from the east coast and I'm really not familiar with the system and I'm a lawyer, so my brain is going. and I'm really not familiar with the system, and I'm a lawyer, so my brain is going, how are regular people going to use this? And like, who's going to have? I'm assuming there's some sort of keypad that if you're a resident, you're going to have the code to it only. And I don't see any of that in the photos on what that, and that seems to be the crux of what we're talking about. So I, that is my concern is, is who's going to have access to the automated part? Because it won't be the people who are coming to shop in the retail.
That's right.
And how are you going to control that? And who's responsible for it when it all goes wrong?
So that's a great question. So the residents who are constant users, they'll get, when they rent an apartment, they get trained, and it's a cellphone app. You come, you click it, car gets ready. It's super, super simple. Also, the folks that are renting the office spaces, that are, they're repeat users. So when you're hired, you get trained, and then you get to go. A common retail user would not use the, would not use the parking. They would use the onsite parking, the ones that are available to anybody.
If this isn't allowed?
It's not that it's not allowed. It's a new technology. It's just not adopted in the zoning code, is my opinion.
So are we able to approve something that's not adopted in the zoning code or recommend approval to?
I'll also add that most cities around us, including LA and Santa Monica, all of them have updated the zoning code to allow it. El Segundo is just a little behind. That's all.
I'm going to steer away from litigating what we should do and shouldn't do on the zoning code when what's before us now is the adjustment. And so can we clarify what the adjustment language that's being requested is?
So the adjustment is primarily to allow tandem configuration with three cars in depth and three cars stacked instead of what our code does allow, which is only two cars back to back and two cars stacked. The mechanism is required the review through a parking demand study per our downtown specific plan and the administration chapter of, of the code. And the peer review analyzed the actual mechanism for noise, for how quickly the car is brought to the user. And, and based on the data that was presented, it was established that it, it was a, a good solution to provide the required parking.
You know, and, and also just to clarify, you know, it's not that we, it is because it's an automated system. We do allow it, tandem parking, if, you know, car lifts or car lifts, whether they're automated or whether, I mean, they're going to be automated in some form or fashion. But like Maria has stated, the, the actual crux of the issue is, the adjustment is to allow for a three-car deep, three stacked high tandem situation in that way that all the parking that's associated, including the third spaces and the third spaces on, on, on the very top, if you will, count towards your overall parking.
So I just want to, I just want to clarify for the commission that it's really, it's not a question of the delivery of the vehicle. It's the question of the configuration and how that satisfies the definition of tandem at the end of the day.
Right.
So the delivery of it, whether it's a valet or a machine or personal use is not the question at, at hand. It's really just about the stacking mechanism. That's right.
Can cars sit in that?
Vertical versus horizontal, that's really sort of the question.
And because, and because it's, it's, it's a, it's a new configuration, that's why we actually requested that, hey, you know, provide us with a parking demand study that would, you know, provide, provide a parking demand study that would justify and, 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 and look at the operationality of the mechanism to ensure that it can function in a, in a, in a manner that would not be detrimental in terms of causing undue delays or, you know, and so they looked, our consulting traffic engineer looked at that, peer reviewed that, and also looked at the, the type of automated system that's being provided and agreed that the way it's configured and the type of mechanism that they have, it, it, it functions in a manner that will not be detrimental or slow, you know, be slower than any other type of mechanism that's out there.
I also want to point out that a tandem configuration, if your car's on the top, then someone has to move the one at the bottom for you to be able to take your car. And if the car is in front when you have back to back, someone has to move the one that's behind to be able to take your car that's in front. Whereas in this mechanism, it's a matrix jigsaw puzzle. You ask for it like a vending machine, and it comes to you, so there's no waiting. There's no one that has to move a car before you, you, you get your car. The only reason why we haven't codified it is because not all mechanisms are the same. So we wanted to make sure that the control is kept in, in the review process to make sure that it is a functional type of mechanism that would still meet the needs for the development. And that's the key thing, that the one size doesn't fit all. And based on the professional peer review, it, it is a good mechanism to provide the required parking.
So this new system, though, this allows more parking than what the code really requires? Because the tandem, when it allows many by stacking it three up and three high, correct?
Only two.
But before, before B2 tandem, which, I mean, obviously, this is more car parking allowed with this new system.
Right. This, this affords the site to then functionally provide for a total of 50 parking spaces, whereas the code requirement is only 42. So they would actually have surplus parking.
Is this technology in any way similar to the one at City of West Hollywood or UCLA in San Monica? Is that type of robotic parking?
I'm, I'm familiar with one project in the city of Santa Monica for UCLA. That one is a fully automated system in which the vehicle also turns around and comes out. The system is similar inside the structure, but you still have to move your car out. So your car is kind of ready to go, and you get in your vehicle, come out. Whereas I believe the system you're describing, it brings your car to you. That's the only difference, because the site is so small, it didn't have room for the turntable.
Is there going to be a valet for this?
Um, no, it wouldn't be required, really.
You guys are trusting people not to hit?
Uh, I'm sorry?
You guys are trusting people to drive straight and not hit the components?
So the, the understanding is that the, the system has a lot of sensors, and the spaces are really wide, and it really helps you come in and out. But the other great thing is it has interval power. So if there's a power loss, the system will still get every single car out, I believe, for two days or something like that. So even in the power outage, you can still retrieve your vehicle.
What's the basis of design based on? What's the manufacturer?
Manufacturer was?
Tapco.
Tapco.
Can EV charging be integrated into the parking?
No, EV charging is provided actually on the open spaces.
So, but the residents then, and the workers, they wouldn't be able to charge their cars while they're in that thing? They'd have to use up one of the surface lot.
That's right. I think the cables would probably interfere with the system function.
What is the name of the parking system? Taco?
T, T-A-P-C-O.
And it's three, it's three by six? What, what is the?
It's three high.
Three high and six wide?
Five wide.
Five wide.
Three deep. So three high, three deep, five wide.
But really, the expectation is the residents and the people working the offices are the ones really using that, not the retail people coming in and out.
That's right. Because of the excess parking, all of the residents and the folks who work there can use it. The retail folks would use the outside parking.
And that outside parking is the, I can't remember. It seems like a relatively small number of spaces. What? Yeah, yeah, but it's, it's eight spaces plus whatever the free parking is across the street from the city. Okay.
There's a street parking on Richmond Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm imagining having, when I drive down there, all those parking spaces are always full. So I'm looking at this as, where's the extra parking coming from? So the extra parking would be the spaces that are on the other side of this, those eight ground floor spaces. And then people would be using whatever the free parking was from before. Okay.
So to clarify, for the parking adjustment, we're not, we're approving the use of this specific mechanism. Because the numbers are fine, the numbers exceed, so we're, we're good there. So that's what it is. That's the adjustment.
That's correct.
Right. So that accounts towards the, the required parking?
Minimum parking was 36, and they're providing about 14 excess.
Okay. Sounds good. And then the design review piece, we're, we're all good with that? If, okay.
I'm relying on you.
I, I think it's, it's a fantastic.
Again, if we're done with public comment, then it would be a good time to close that and then go into deliberation.
Okay. Thank you. Now close public comment. So I, I mean, yeah, we, we talked about the design extensively, I remember. And I think that, you know, I think that we, we had, I think similar to the public comment giving background on the materials used and how they try to integrate kind of old and new and like shared elements throughout the thing, that, that we were good with it. I actually think that they went above and beyond keeping these buildings. Because I, I love the little, the jailhouse or whatever it is. I mean, I love that it's keeping, it's not just taking these old elements and putting it in. It's actually preserving them and including them into the design. So I think that went a long way for, for a lot of us. So I think that we were all, we, we approved the, the design. And like I said, I, from memory, I don't think it has materially changed at all. So from a design perspective, I think that, you know, I, I still stand by the previous approval.
I think we're playing a game, and I, I don't know what the point of that game is. But if you, if you, you know, if we're fine with it, it's fine. It's fine.
Can, can I ask, because I wasn't here when the first approval went through. Does anybody recall the, the primary differences between the objectives of Richmond Street and the old downtown specific plan compared to today's?
It was primarily the brick, trying to introduce and keep brick. It definitely only allowed four residential units, so now they're adding two additional based on the specific plan. And the specific plan had a one-to-one FAR with the residential not included. But the density of, of the units above were based on the number of lots. And so since they only had four lots, they allowed four units.
And from a design standpoint, an aesthetic, the brick was the primary?
That they had to integrate brick.
Okay, so the, today's specific plan is written pretty different. Well, not pretty differently, but it's, it's more expansive. As you heard, you know, David mentioned that there's a desire to facilitate in the current specific plan, there's a desire to facilitate a, a more eclectic, for lack of a better word, because that is the word that's used over and over again in the specific plan, desire to pull from several materials. I think an important conversation today might be, are there other things that you could look for, that you would look for, or things that we can integrate now, working while the applicants are here, sort of navigating that here now to this project or that you can think of?
Yeah, and, and I, and I would just like to add, Michael, sorry, is, is the previous downtown specific plan, although it, it also had standards for different districts in the specific plan area, the, the standards for Richmond Street in the previous downtown were not as robust as they are today. I mean, if you look at, you know, like in the staff report, we, we put the table in there, and that lists out all the objective criteria that, that developments must comply with, that's much more robust than what was provided in the previous downtown specific plan. Now, the intent, it was the same in that it's, you know, it, it's, it's there to preserve the district's character, and, and it's, it was also intended to be residence-serving, providing a pedestrian-oriented environment while allowing for flexibility in a mixture of commercial and residential uses. So the project as designed and assessed with that criteria in mind, ultimately, you know, we found that it was compatible and in keeping with that. Some of the, 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 the standards, although the standards themselves have, are now much more robust, the intention is pretty much the same as it was back in the previous downtown specific plan.
This project notwithstanding, I guess, would we have considered if this was an empty, God forbid, knock on wood, earthquake had come, knocked that whole thing down, would we have said, oh, to preserve the look and feel, we would require a redevelopment to use brick in the redevelopment so that it would look like old, to incorporate the old-timey look of Richmond Street? And I guess what I, 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 you know, stepping back, I would go, they went through a lot of trouble to keep these specific bricks in these specific pieces of this project. I don't know why that was necessary if I look at this unless you put a plaque on it that says, hey, this is the old jail, and this is the old whatever that, you know, from 19. You wouldn't know. You're not gonna know. So what did we preserve when we made them go through all this trouble?
I think, I think certain people will know. People that will look at it.
Certain people?
Certain people would. I mean, not everyone, not, not everyone's going to understand. People that are in the construction industry, architecture industry, and kind of know it, they'll know, yeah, that's an existing building, that's existing brick. So people do know. Not everyone, though.
They, they might know it's existing brick, but are they going to know it's 120-year-old brick? Are they going to know it's from a special part of the history unless you marquee it somehow? Like, I don't know what we preserved. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm reading too much into the renderings versus how it looks when I walk down Richmond Street. But like, I don't, I just feel like we went through a lot of trouble. Like, they went through a lot of trouble, we're asking other people to go through a lot of trouble, and I don't know what we're getting out of it, because that looks like a completely different thing to me than what I would have thought the character.
So?
Is there currently a plaque on it?
The, the old downtown specific plan did encourage primarily the red brick, okay? And on Richmond Street, you have the Old Town Hall, which is right across the street. So there is a lot of effort made in the old specific plan to preserve the brick. The new specific plan, not the case, but it still has to be context-sensitive. And then architect has interpreted context-sensitive means doing some brick to integrate and retain and preserve the two existing brick buildings that are already there. So that's why you see, even on the residential component on the third floor, there's still brick. It's a different color brick, but it's still brick.
But could we have done that with just a, the developer could have just had a brick facade and not had to use these specific bricks? Or could they have done something else that would have been less troublesome in the design? Where they could have just had brick as the visual versus these exact bricks from 19 whatever, '07 or 1913?
We're not dictating the type of brick they're using. They were.
So the preservation didn't require?
A type of brick, meaning that in the general scheme of, of the visual, you're not coming in with a structure that has cinder block. Cinder block would totally change the, the appearance, the architectural look of the building. So instead, bring in brick. Now, it doesn't have to be a specific era-type brick.
Okay.
Because brick, for the most part, doesn't change whether it was done in 19, you know, you have the aged look, right? And so, as Maria pointed out, it has to also be context-sensitive to the area. And so, you know, knowing that there is the brick materials that are out there in the general area, we're saying, okay, you know, they are utilizing brick to incorporate that so that you're not coming in with a structure that has completely different exterior materials that run contrary to the context of the area.
But we wanted, we wanted to keep that jailhouse building on the corner. Like, we wanted that to stay there.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, so the jailhouse is a whole nother conversation about when it comes to structures that are legally protected, even though it's not a technically historic designated landmark, it is also still legally protected and requires certain analytics if we're going to do anything but keep it there and, and design around it, incorporate that design. So that jailhouse building is a completely different conversation in terms of preservation and, and all that. So I, I, I'm trying to, I- So I, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand. I'm trying to understand where you'd like to go so that we can help you get there or help us all get there, and so that would be helpful.
Yeah, I just wanted to orient my brain around, like what we, what we were, we think this fits whatever criteria the old commission thought made sense under the new plan. I'm okay with that, we can move forward. I was just, from my brain, I was like, so what were we, what are we really trying to do? Is keeping like something like that on the corner, that little piece there and the building in between, that's okay. Even if the rest of it looks completely different and it's completely modernized and updated, did we, did, are we, are we achieving what we thought we wanted to do? And if that's what we wanted, then okay, I just.
So the definition of eclectic is the mix of different. Architectural styles, and that is what the downtown has. It, it shows up constantly, repeatedly.
But, but, and I, and to Michael's point, eclectic versus we want this specific building to stay. Are two different things, like they could have made it eclectic and started from ground up, brand-new materials and still made it look eclectic. But they had to keep that building on the corner and they have to keep that other building in the middle on the Richmond Street side. Like, they had to keep it, and I, I, you didn't have to keep it, oh, you could have knocked it down, you wanted to keep it. Okay, I was worried that we were making you do a thing you didn't wanna do and it cost a lot of money. Oh, okay, so you saved money, cause we didn't make you knock it down. See, that's what I mean, that's exactly what I'm talking about, like, we, we insisted on that and maybe it would have been better or easier. But it, I'm, I'm, I'm done, I just wanted to get that off.
Yeah, the main building that had to be protected is the jailhouse.
Just the jailhouse, not the other one.
You could see the brick is, brick that's been bleached by sun and probably the mortar is scored out. And you have more three-dimensional, it's, and then the newer brick is gonna be more flush, a redder, brighter color. That's the meaning of eclectic, you know, it's like, it's mixed.
It fits the definition, it fits a definition of eclectic, but it could have been anything, and we could have also called it eclectic, so it's fine. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Commissioner Christian, I think the other flip side that you're, that you're sort of getting to is just the character. It may be eclectic, but is it, does it meet the intent of the character that the commission?
Right, and do the residents look at that and go, we have, we have successfully preserved the character of Old Town Richmond Street when we did this? When this is built and people walk by, are the people who thought we were preserving something, are they gonna feel like mission accomplished? We did what we set out to do. If they, if that's, if that's the view of the commission and they're in the city council, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm not fighting it. I just feel like I was worried that we're making people jump through hoops. And not necessarily achieving the goal that we set out, which is preserving the character of Old Town Richmond Street. Cause I, I'm not fully seeing it, but it's okay.
Well, you're a commissioner, so I, I mean, I think we're, we're looking to you as part of the, the five of you or four of you tonight.
Not gonna blow this project up over, over that view, if the other, if everybody else was okay with it, I say go ahead. I just wanna make that voice to say, hey, or when we look at another project. That wants to do a similar thing, like a block further down Richmond Street and comes up with a design that looks like this. Are we gonna say that a steel and glass structure with some brick from nineteen eleven satisfies the preservation of Old Town Richmond? And I'm gonna be, and maybe that'll be a bigger discussion then.
Well, and then the context too, a block down, for example, the other buildings in the context of the neighborhood might all be cinder blocks. So how does a brick building integrate into that area? So it's really, you know, I, I don't think you're like, if you're worried about this setting a precedent, I don't think you are, because it, it is, it is basically a case-by-case, project-by-project basis. Um, and then ultimately, as, as Michael's saying, you know, we, we came up with our analysis based on what we looked at. We came up with a conclusion, uh, but ultimately the planning, I mean, that's what the planning commission is for, there's a, you know, they. You know what, staff, you guys, you know, don't know what you guys are talking about, that's fine, and if you, if you disagree with, with ultimately with staff's conclusion, there's nothing wrong with that.
I just, I don't wanna tear up everybody's work over my one thing. If everyone else is fine with it, then I'm okay. And again, not, this project notwithstanding, so we can, we can move on, I just wanna get that off, that when this comes up again, I'm probably gonna have more thoughts.
Let me bring you to Rock and Brew, how do you think that got approved? So that's very modern, different.
Different, different district.
Yeah, but it's, it's completely different.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, again, yeah.
With brick across the street, yeah.
Any other thoughts or comments from commissioners? Okay. Anyone like to propose a motion to approve?
Let them park.
Hey, I'll, I'll motion to approve.
Uh, not yet. Am I, am I allowed to second?
I seconded, I seconded.
And I'll, I'll take votes, Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Chair, uh, Vice Chair Ingah?
Aye.
And Chair Magai.
Aye.
Motion passes four oh.
Thank you. Um, okay, moving on, new business, there's none, unfinished business, there's also none, reports from the community development director?
Nothing from myself, sure.
Um, any reports from commissioners?
I just wanna ask the staff regarding the city attorney, I noticed that Joaquin wasn't here today.
Yeah, um, Joaquin has taken a position with another firm, so he's no longer working for the Hensley Law Group, uh, who represents El Segundo. So, uh, I think before you came in, Commissioner Ingah, I'd introduced Greg Katasevich, who's on the phone with us at the moment. Um, while the city attorney rep who will replace Joaquin. Uh, is currently on vacation, he's longtime employee of the Hensley Law Group. Um, I just started working for them for the first time, but when I came on board, he had already been working with the city for, for about seven years or so. So, um, uh, David King, if you're familiar by any chance, will be back here, uh, with us at future meetings. He just happens to be on vacation at the moment.
Anyone? Um, I think it's planning, we received an email from a resident about Grand Avenue, some beautification of Grand Avenue, she sent it a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know what we're supposed to do with that, actually, I think that's City of LA and not El Segundo that she was referring to, um, some of, um. It was, she sent some renderings about, um, Grand Avenue coming up from Vista Del Mar up Grand.
Yeah.
You know, with her idea of, you know, beautifying it with like roadways and I, I don't think it's part of, part of the plan, it's probably more public works. But I think that's City of LA, not even El Segundo, um, I'm just thinking as residents, we probably respond back to her, um, so that's something maybe. I don't know if you guys were on that email, I know it's sent to the planning commission, we should probably respond.
I haven't seen it, but feel free to forward it along and then we can ensure that it gets into the right hands to get a, a proper response to it, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't look at that to see who all it went to, I knew it came to us, but I wasn't sure if you guys, if the planning department was included. So I didn't touch it, but I did read it.
Yeah, it came on July third.
Yeah.
Yeah, feel free to pass it along.
Very, very fanciful and forward-looking.
Yeah, it was beautiful, I, I think it's City of LA she's referring to, not El Segundo, so.
Yeah, they're not gonna touch that, it's crazy talk, but it looked nice.
Oh, yeah, they're great.
And nothing from me, uh, any reports from our city attorney?
Nothing from me tonight, thank you.
Okay, with that, we can adjourn the meeting, thank you, everyone.